Good morning. We'll call this public hearing to order. This is a public hearing to seek input regarding House Bill 4187. The short title of the bill is the Business Liability Protection Act. The request for this public hearing was filed after the bill had been posted on the agenda of the Judiciary Committee. And in view of the short amount of time that we have remaining before our bills have to pass over to the Senate, we went ahead with the consideration of the bill in the Judiciary Committee, and it did pass out of the committee yesterday. The public hearing was scheduled as soon as we could after we got the request. We're supposed to allow two calendar days for notice to the public. So we're going to have this hearing today. Keep in mind that the bill is no longer with the Judiciary Committee, but it has or will be reported to the House and will be taken up for consideration in the House. So hopefully this input will be helpful to members of the House as they consider the bill. We have about fifteen people signed up. What we're going to do is allow each person two and a half minutes. If you'll notice, at the podium, there's a red light. When the red light comes on, that'll let you know you have about fifteen seconds to wrap up your remarks. So please start wrapping up your remarks as soon as the red light comes on. We ask that you honor that because we have a limited amount of time for this hearing. If you go over, you may be infringing on other presenters' time. So please pay attention to that. We have folks scheduled here in the back. The doorkeeper will tap you on the shoulder if your time runs out. Please leave the podium at that point. Let me explain one thing about the rules of the House here. We have some rules that some people might think are archaic, but they are rules of the House that, as the presiding officer, I'll have to honor. One of those rules is that you not address other members of the House by name or make any type of disparaging remarks. As I said, that may seem archaic to you. There are places here in the Capitol. You're free to express any opinions you have, but we ask that you honor the rules of the House when you're here on the House floor. There are copies of the bill available if you need them. If you have written materials that you want us to distribute among the committee members, please file them with the clerk, who's the gentleman to my left. This proceeding is streamed live, at least audibly, so please keep that in mind when you're making your remarks. As I said, please refrain from making any type of personal comments or referring to anyone specifically by name. We also ask that you not engage any type of displays of approval or disapproval of those who make remarks. We will call two names. The first name is the name who will be speaking immediately. The second name will be the person who follows that person. And we'd ask you, in order to keep this moving smoothly, that when your name is called as the second person, you come up, take a seat or somewhere close to the podium. You can use these folding chairs just beside the podium. We're going to try to alternate between those who are speaking in favor and those who are speaking opposed to the legislation. It's not exactly an even split, so there might be one or two that'll be opposing and one or two that'll be in favor of the legislation. We'll do our best to alternate those. We'll ask if you can remain after the public hearing is concluded, if you're one of the presenters, in case members here have any personal questions they'd like to ask you. Okay, we'll begin with Tonia Adams, followed by Erin Dunn. Tonia Adams. I'm sorry, Tonia Thomas. Tonia Thomas. I apologize. I misread that. And Erin Dunn would be the next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Tonia Thomas, and I'm speaking on behalf of the West Virginia Coalition Against Domestic Violence and the fourteen licensed programs that serve all fifty-five counties in the state. HB 4187 overrides the ability of employers throughout the state to determine for themselves what is best when it comes to ensuring gun safety in our community and workplaces. Last year, more than twenty-seven people, including bystanders in West Virginia, were killed as a result of domestic violence. More than sixty-seven percent of those homicides involved a firearm. The presence of a gun in a domestic violence situation makes it five times more likely that a victim will be killed, and in 2016, the U.S. Department of Justice found that the presence of a gun in a domestic violence situation significantly increases the risk of homicide, endangering victims, other family members, bystanders, and coworkers. According to the CDC, homicide is the second-leading cause of injury death for women at work, and over half of the homicides perpetrated by intimate partners occurred in parking lots and public buildings. We are disappointed and frankly frustrated that state lawmakers in West Virginia are proposing to overrule common sense workplace gun violence prevention measures. When we look around our community, we want to know that our employers have the authority to keep us safe in the place where we're just trying to do our job. We urge you to reject HB 4187. Mr. Chairman, do you need a copy of my comments and sources?
The next presenter is Erin Dunn, followed by Patrick Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning. My name is Erin Dunn, and I am speaking on behalf of myself and all concerned West Virginians. I love my state, and I love my country, but both have been conquered by a foreign enemy: fear. Fear is dominating our lives, thoughts, and dreams. Fear causes us to confuse brother for enemy and to see threats in every shadow. Fear causes us to act irrationally. It is this fear that I believe spawned the creation of HB 4187. I believe that fear drives this bill forward, and I believe it is the same fear that causes you now to act poorly. House Bill 4187 may have been created to try and take that fear away from people, that the people will be able to feel more protected. I argue that it will remove one more safe place in our great state. Businesses should be able to regulate their own property and make their own decisions about how best to keep their employees safe. House Bill 4187 would remove that much-needed autonomy and self-regulation. The CDC states that homicide is the second-leading cause of injury and death for women at work, and over half of the homicides perpetuated by intimate partners occurred in parking lots and public buildings. I strongly urge you to reject House Bill 4187 and create a safer state for all West Virginians. I leave you with this: Mountaineers are always free, but are we free of fear? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Patrick Moore, followed by Sidney Smith.
Good morning. I'm a husband, father, pharmacist, lifetime West Virginia resident. You've heard from Moms Demand Action before. You're going to hear lies about the bill, glorified tales of blood in the parking lots. The same arguments used against constitutional carry. Moms Demand, Coalition for Gun Violence, they'll oppose any bill that appears pro-gun. They'll spend out-of-state Bloomberg money to try and convince you to vote the bill down. I represent West Virginia, many family and friends who could not be here today, as well as hundreds of West Virginia voters. You've heard opposition from the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce, opposition to a bill that will eliminate the business liability on firearms stored locked in a vehicle on their parking lots. Eliminate the liability. On their Legislative Action webpage, they say, "This bill is dangerous infringement upon private property rights," and that employers should be able to regulate weapons on the business premises. Remember, this bill only affects parking lots, firearms stored in a locked vehicle. They can still, as terrible as it sounds, ban carrying their establishments. If you click on the Chamber's Legislative Issues 2018 page, you will find the following under the energy heading. "The West Virginia Legislature should pass cotenancy legislation to ensure that the majority of ownership of a piece of property can make decisions without being hindered by fractional interests." I believe the Chamber of Commerce is so anti-gun that they're prepared to pretend to care about property rights, because if they cared about absolute property rights, they would have asked the legislature to vote no on cotenancy. And speaking of property rights, what kind of tax does everyone pay on their vehicle? Personal property, right? I know my employer isn't paying the taxes on my car, so why should my employer, by policy, effectively disarm me all day? I'll leave work at 7:00 p.m. At 7:05, when I get the, "Honey, can you pick up the [blank]" text message or phone call?" I know that I will be shopping without the ability to protect myself, because I'm not going to run home, pick up the firearm, come back, and go shopping at Walmart where the parking lot is questionable at best. You've heard from the oil, gas, and chemical industries. You've heard from Toyota. You've heard tales of how hazardous the parking lots will become, yet firearm policy decisions are left to the company without guidance from DHS, EPA, or DEP. And speaking of gas, need I mention forced pooling at this point? Unless 100% of vehicles entering these parking lots today are searched, one cannot say that these parking lots are firearm-free at this point. You trusted us with constitutional carry. You trusted us with school parking lots. You trusted us with the Capitol parking lots. Why can you not trust us in an employer parking lot? In closing, I would like to thank House Small Business, Entrepreneurship, and Economic Development Committees and the Judiciary Committee for bringing this bill to the floor. Urges passage without amendment, and any further amendments to water down the bill would be viewed as anti-gun. I'll leave you with a quote from a former delegate from the not-so-friendly gun state of Texas, how a politician stands on the Second Amendment tells you how he or she views you as an individual, as a trustworthy and productive citizen, or as a part of an unruly crowd that needs to be lorded over, controlled, supervised, and taken care of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Sidney Smith, followed by Mark Harmon.
My name is Sidney Smith with the West Virginia Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Why are we having this discussion while our nation is grieving over the senseless loss of seventeen children who didn't make it home from school last week? We are talking about protecting the rights of employees to bring their guns to work and lock them in their vehicles. While today's youth are marching on Washington because they don't feel safe and they don't see us taking action, in West Virginia, we are marching on our Capitol to debate over ruling employer rights to keep their premises safe for their customers and employees. Most victims killed in a domestic violence-related homicide are killed with a gun. The risk of death increases fivefold when abusers have access to a firearm. And we are here talking about increasing access to firearms? This bill would even create greater access to firearms on premises of the domestic violence shelters who strive to provide safe haven for victims fleeing abuse. Some people feel safe and protected when carrying a gun. Some victims of abuse feel terror and intimidation when their partners carry or have access to a gun. So in considering this bill, please look at it from both sides and consider all the ramifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mark Harmon, followed by Joanna Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Harmon. I'm a businessman, a property owner, a gun owner, a life member of the National Rifle Association, and my family bought, sold, and traded guns in my hometown in the same location for over sixty-five years. House Bill 4187 would force businessmen and property owners to allow guns on their property, whether they desire to have the guns there or not. Property owners have traditionally had the right to prohibit guns from their property, allowing them to make the choice that is best for them, their employees, and their customers. Many business owners choose to prohibit handguns from their property for the safety and peace of mine of their customers and employees, while others choose to allow handguns or other weapons on their property. Regardless, it should be their choice. It's their property, and they should decide what is best on their property. Yet, House Bill 4187 would force private employers to allow employees to store handguns in their motor vehicles, whether they want them there or not. In addition to safety for employees and invitees, there are other legitimate reasons for employers to choose not to have firearms stored on their property, such as the risk of guns being stolen. Cars are one of the most popular targets for firearms thieves. Of the cities for which we've been able to obtain data, nearly one in five guns reported stolen were taken from vehicles. These policies are opposed by major corporations, small businessmen, property owners, and state chambers across the country, and I hope you will also oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Joanna Morgan, followed by Steve Roberts.
Good morning. My name is Joanna Morgan. I'm a resident of Canaan County, where I became West Virginian by choice six years ago. I'm also a female, a professional, and a person with a physical disability. To me, the right to effectively protect myself is very important. I'm also a social worker with twenty years of experience, where I've worked my entire career with vulnerable adults and children. I have great respect for the safety of others, and I do believe that this measure is a common-sense measure that allows people to effectively protect themselves. We have people who are survivors of domestic violence, who live in communities that are more dangerous because they don't have the physical means or the resources to move out of those communities. Those people now go to work and are effectively disarmed for the entire day. We've heard that parking lots are an area where attacks happen, and I believe that very seriously. We are also denying these people, because they are law-abiding citizens, the ability to effectively protect themselves, not only in their parking lots at work, but as they go to and from their day, and they are required, because they have to work a lot of hours, to do their errands and other things within a short period of time. This bill does not allow anybody who should not have a gun to have a gun. It allows people who legally are able to carry and who are responsive individuals to continue to have those rights on a daily basis. I hear a lot in these types of arguments where people say, "Well, we're not worried about people like you. We're not worried about people who are law-abiding citizens and professionals." And the reality is, is I do represent West Virginians. There are a lot of women, a lot of mothers and daughters and sisters just like me, who need additional help to protect themselves professionally. And because they obey the laws and they obey their employer's actual policies on this, they are effectively disarmed all day. This does not allow anything in a secure area, and it does not require an employer to allow things on the property when they're not. But in your own vehicle where you paid personal property taxes, it does allow you to responsibly secure that weapon. I personally see a lot of people every day who follow laws and, as a result, are not able to protect themselves effectively, so I do urge that you support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Steve Roberts, followed by David Rozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Steve Roberts. I'm proud to lead the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce, which is an organization of five thousand members found throughout West Virginia. Our members employ over half of West Virginia's workers. Ninety percent are small businesses, and our goal is to create an economy that grows good jobs. It's on behalf of those members who overwhelmingly have spoken on this issue that I am here today. The legislature has been on a path to create jobs. Since May of 2016, ten thousand new jobs have been created in West Virginia. We support and applaud the efforts of the legislature to bring jobs to our economy. By adding a regulatory burden, House Bill 4187 takes us in the wrong direction for job creation. If enacted, this bill strips away part of an employer's ability to manage its own business. Further, this bill adds a new cause of action for lawsuits against employers. House Bill 4187 misses the fact that employers and employees are already successfully working this issue out without more government control. We urge you to follow the example set by President Trump and our Congress. Lift regulation. Ease the burden on employers. Free us up to solve our own problems. Nationally, this is working to create jobs and increase the GDP. The same philosophy of economic freedom can and will work in West Virginia. To all of you, thank you for your public service and for the opportunity to comment on this bill today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. David Rozier, followed by Art Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. My name is Dave Rozier. I'm the general manager of administration at the Toyota facility in Buffalo, West Virginia. At Toyota, ensuring the safety and health of our employees is considered the foundation of our organization. Throughout the company's history globally, Toyota's put a high priority on the safe and comfortable work environment focusing on prevention of accidents and occupational illness. It's part of what we consider our Toyota Way and its core to respect for people. Toyota Motor Manufacturing West Virginia Toyota Motor Manufacturing West Virginia opposes House Bill 4187 for its risk in hindering the employer analysis of best practices in regard to safety for their facility and employees on their own property and jeopardizing the corporate safety standards that are set from a global perspective for all Toyota manufacturing facilities. Proactive prevention is a key element in fundamental safety, and this legislation, if enacted, would allow employers to establish proactive policies protecting employees from potential workplace violence. Currently, Toyota West Virginia prohibits weapons on company property, including parking lots. Passage of this legislation would add an additional concern to managing employee safety and visitor safety and those around the facility. And let me share two examples. So publicly, we had an incident at the end of last year where law enforcement had to come into the facility. What we heard from the team members following that incident was they were looking to the company and asked, "What are you doing to help keep us safe? How are we going to prevent additional workplace violence incidents occurring in the future?" That's what they looked to us to answer. Secondly, we learned of another team member who had verbalized that if he wanted to inflict harm on mass employees, his strategy was to force an evacuation. One of the muster points is near the parking lot. He would locate then in the parking lot in order to inflict harm. So allowing guns in the parking lot, as this bill would allow, would just feed into what this team member had dreamt of. So please take these concerns into consideration. As Toyota Motor Manufacturing, we should be able to, as a private employer, implement our own company policies that are in the best practices to provide a safe environment for all of our team members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rozier. Art Tom, followed by Rebecca McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Art Tom. I represent the nearly 100,000 members of the National Rifle Association here in West Virginia. I'm also a resident of West Virginia. I sit here listening, and I hear all the same arguments that we've heard when we passed right-to-carry laws, when we passed the constitutional carry law, that blood was going to run through the streets and people were going to be dying everywhere. Across the country, in all the places that these laws have passed, as well as employer parking lot protections, not one time can anybody show me where that has actually happened. Not one time can somebody directly connect any of these laws to any of that carnage, anywhere. A business owner's private property rights are not affected by a law preventing the micromanagement of the lawful contents of a person's privately-owned automobile. Moreover, an employer's private property interests do not trump a person's right to have a firearm available for self-defense, if needed, during the daily commute to and from work. As with all civil rights, employers and owners of commercial property may not act with disregard to the rights of citizens. Reasonable accommodations is the foundation of the protection of all civil rights. A commercial landowner is subject to numerous limits imposed by the federal, state, and local governments on what may and may not occur on its property. Employees have a legitimate private property interest where their automobiles and their contents are concerned. In our legal system, private rights extend to the property other than land. We heard about, from the domestic violence groups, how most related violent crimes in workplaces are committed by non-employees. According to the Bureau of Justice Statistics, 84% of all workplace murders are committed by strangers. 7% are committed by current or former employees. Naturally, strangers and former employees are not bound by any company policy pertaining to employees. Anyone determined to commit a violent crime will not be prevented from doing so by mere company policy against having guns in cars. This should go without saying, since criminals are already willing to break laws against murder, rape, robbery, and assault. Laws protecting the right to leave firearms in a locked motor vehicle do not authorize a person to have the firearm outside of the vehicle nor in the interior of the employer's property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. Rebecca McPhail, followed by Jim McJunkin.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca McPhail, and I'm the president of the West Virginia Manufacturers Association. The WVMA and its members have significant concerns about House Bill 4187 as it passed the House Judiciary Committee. Our members are committed to the safety of their employees and the safety of the communities in which they operate. Manufacturers go to great lengths to comply with state, federal, and local regulations that enforce things that make a safe and secure work environment. We even go beyond that with voluntary programs like responsible care. Impeding the ability of manufacturers to establish operational policies at sites with certain hazardous materials, flammable substances, volatile processes, or areas restricted for safety reasons limits our ability to provide the safest operating workplace as possible. As we work to attract and expand investment in West Virginia, a state poised for significant growth in the chemical industry, we fear that policy like HB 4187 as passed by House Judiciary sends the wrong message to companies looking to locate in West Virginia. We encourage the House of Delegates to consider how other states apply similar policies that strike a balance between Second Amendment rights and an employer's right to create a safer workplace, places like Texas, Alaska, and Louisiana, who've adopted provisions that provide that balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McPhail. Jim McJunkin, followed by Kathy Hess Kraus.
My name is Jim McJunkin. I'm a pediatrician, speaking on behalf of the West Virginia Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics and its 200 members, and as Chair of the Injury Prevention Committee of the West Virginia Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. House Bill 4187 increases exposure of children and youth to unsecured weapons in a cramped space. The bill does not ensure interior securing of weapons. Even in the most well-meaning of situations, young children exposed to weapons, although unintentionally, find ways to harm themselves. Very young children seeking to pull the trigger may not have enough strength and turn the gun toward themselves to use their thumbs to pull the trigger with devastating consequences. Other than exposure of young children, there is a concern of increased exposure of teens to weapons in a state where teen suicide, usually by firearm, is the second-leading cause of preventable death in studies done by the West Virginia Child Fatality Review Team. For these reasons, the West Virginia Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics and its Injury Prevention Committee strongly oppose House Bill 4187. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McJunkin. Kathy Lee Kraus, followed by Eli Baumwell.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Hess Kraus. I live in Buffalo, Putnam County. My husband and I have five children. We homeschool our youngest two, and our older three are grown men. I am a lifelong West Virginian, along with all of our children. My husband has been here about 30 years, and we are gun owners. Currently in West Virginia, an employee at Walmart who is trusted by Walmart to sell firearms can, on his or her lunch break, legally purchase a firearm, which would include completing a background check. The employee could take that firearm to the car, lock it in his vehicle out of sight, and be fired for having a firearm in their personal vehicle. This is an individual who is not only trusted by Walmart to work at a firearms counter and sell firearms, but also, just moments earlier, completed a background check. Article 2, Section 22 of the state constitution says, "A person has a right to keep and bear arms for the defense of self, family, home, and state for the lawful hunting and recreational use." On a personal note, since I homeschool my children, we are often out for the day. If my husband needs me to stop by his work and drop something off to him on my way out, I would have to leave my gun at home, because his work parking lot is a no-gun zone. By doing this, it is leaving myself defenseless, unprotected, and unable to protect my children throughout the day while we are out and on our excursions for the day. This bill simply maintains a right guaranteed by the state constitution, and I encourage our representatives to support West Virginia citizens and this bill with no amendments. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Eli Baumwell, followed by Zach Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. My name is Eli Baumwell. You probably know me as the Policy Director for the American Civil Liberties Union of West Virginia. I am not speaking in that capacity. The ACLU of West Virginia does not have a position on House Bill 4187, but I speak today as a private citizen, as a West Virginian, and as a father. I speak as an American who's watched as the uniquely American phenomenon of gun violence continues to claim thousands of lives per year, while our legislative bodies continue to relax even the most common sense restrictions on firearms. Now, I also have a deep and abiding respect for the rights guaranteed under the Constitution. But I know the constitutional protections generally apply to government. They do not apply to private entities. Private entities may restrict speech, they may require invasions of privacy that we would not allow our government to engage in. Similarly, employers have the right to control what happens on their private property. Now, I have seen this legislative body take many steps over the past couple of years to make West Virginia more welcoming to business. Businesses do not want this law. We've already heard that. Mass shootings have become more common and more deadly in the past two decades, and workplaces are the second-most common place for these shootings to occur. To go against the business community and restrict their ability to take precautions against this undercuts the clear intent of this legislature to welcome business to our state. Now, we're still currently mourning from the most recent mass shooting to shake our nation's conscience. Is this really the time to pass more legislation that makes guns even more ubiquitous in our society? I urge you no vote on House Bill 4187. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumwell. Zach Campbell. We had someone else that signed up, but apparently has scratched their name off. Want to be sure that was intentional. Is there someone here by the name of Wade? Do you wish to speak? All right. Thank you, sir. Last speaker then would be Zach Campbell.
My name is Dr. Zachary Campbell. I'm a Putnam County resident, a WVCDL member, and I support HR 4187 in its current form. This bill eliminates the liability of any employer if an employee chooses to keep a firearm locked inside their personal vehicle while it's parked. That's it. This does not in any way allow an employee to carry a firearm or even remove the firearm from the vehicle while on the property of the employer. It does not allow an employee to make terroristic threats, which are already illegal. I urge passage of this bill, unamended, so that employers can no longer treat an employee as a second-class citizen, so that employers may no longer harass, threaten, coerce, or otherwise discriminate against an employee simply because the employee chooses to exercise their constitutional right to protect themselves while inside their own vehicle. Note: not the employer's vehicle, not the vehicle that the employer pays taxes on. This is the employee's own personal property. It's what they are in when they're traveling between home and their place of employment. Now, I'm not a paid lobbyist. I'm a private citizen. I'm somebody who's faced this type of discrimination every single day I've worked. I welcome any questions from any member of the House concerning this bill, and I ask that you pass it in its current, unamended form. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. That concludes the remarks of those who've signed up. Once again, if you are able to stay around, there may be members of the Legislative of the House here that might have personal questions to you. Thank each of you for your input. As I indicated earlier, the bill has already passed out of the Judiciary Committee and will be taken up by the House for consideration. Thank you and have a good afternoon. We are adjourned.